Relative to Mass., General Law, Chapter 38, Section 20F. And for the benefit of the public, this meeting is being recorded by both video and audio methods. Good evening. Welcome to the Town Council Meeting on Monday, August 8th, 2022, here at 7:00 PM in the McKinnon Council Chambers. First order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the common good which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number two, roll call.
Counselor Adams, present. Counselor Daniel.
Present.
Counselor Dow.
Present.
Counselor Lazo.
Present.
Counselor Marcati.
Present.
Counselor Montigny.
Present.
Counselor Rivas.
Present.
Counselor Ryan.
Present.
Counselor Steves.
Present.
All nine.
Very good, nine, we have a quorum. Item number three, consider and accept the Town Council Meeting Minutes of Monday, July 25th, 2022.
Don't move.
Second.
Any corrections? Counselor Ryan.
I will be abstaining from this vote, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any corrections, deletions, additions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Abstain. 8:01, Counselor Ryan abstains.
So does Counselor Dow.
I'm abstaining.
I'm sorry. Item number four, Subcommittee Reports. Letter A, General Government, Counselor Steves.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've had a meeting on August 1st. At the moment, we don't have any items on this agenda, but we did briefly talk about the Cook &amp; Company Agreement that the manager suggested postponing till the next GenGov meeting, because it's not quite ready. We talked a little bit about our Subcommittee Priorities.
Mr. Chair, nobody can hear.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
No, not him.
It's working?
Something wrong with the microphone.
Okay. We had a meeting on August 1st. There are no Agenda Items on this agenda for this week. We did briefly talk about the Cook &amp; Company Agreement. However, that got postponed at the request of the manager. We discussed some general government priorities. We talked a little bit about the, continued the discussion of the drone policy and bylaw, and we're going to be doing a lot more work on that going forward. And that was it. We have another meeting next Monday, where we're going to be talking primarily about the Wetlands bylaw.
Very good. Department of Public Works, Counselor Marcati.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. The DPW Subcommittee Meeting met on July 28th in the Veterans Room.
Can't hear you.
I'm talking right into the mic.
I don't, I don't think any, the microphone is not working.
Check.
I am speaking right into the mic.
I can hear you now.
Try it again, Counselor. Try it again.
In attendance were myself, Counselor Steves, and Dow, Citizen Member Splain, and Lazo. Also in attendance were Counselor Lazo and Adams, interim DPW Director Matt Disjarden, and Town Manager Michael McCall, and many citizens and residents. We reviewed, discussed the Town Manager appointment of Jonathan Kamasi as the Town Engineer Assistant. That'll be Agenda Item Number 14 tonight. We reviewed, discussed the appointment of Kevin Splain to the DPW Subcommittee. That will be Agenda Item Number 10 tonight. We reviewed, discussed the appointment of Steve Lazo to the DPW Subcommittee, and that will be Agenda Item Number 11 tonight. We reviewed, discussed the proposal for tie-in bond for design services related to the Koasi reservoir pumping station improvements, Agenda Item Number 27 tonight. And we reviewed, discussed Water Recovery Assistant Program Contract with MassDOT, Agenda Item Number 28 tonight. We also reviewed an update on road improvements in town, including Main Street, North Street, Mechanic Street, Ellis Road, and other roads in town. There was a suggestion by Counselor Lazo that we take a look at designating money from the sale of the Wells Building for use on road improvements, and I will include that discussion and possible vote at our next Subcommittee Meeting. At this time, we do not have a meeting planned, but I will be scheduling a meeting within the next couple of weeks. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Education and Human Services, Counselor Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. We have had no meeting yet, but we do have a meeting scheduled for Monday, August 15th, at 7:00 PM.
Very good, thank you. Planning and Development, Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, on 28th July, 2022, Agenda Item Number 9. Once we get to them, I'll point them out, and none scheduled at this time. Thank you.
Very good. Protection of Persons and Property, Counselor Lazo.
We will be looking to, we had a meeting, and I have five Agenda Items with recommendations from Subcommittee, and we will be scheduling another protection of persons property, hopefully by, for Monday.
Very good, thank you. Item number five, Chairman's Announcements. I have two announcements. The first announcement is that I'm appointing Counselor Lazo to the Ad Hoc Town Council Rules and Regulations Subcommittee, and I gave the charge at the last meeting. I can give that again to you if you need it.
I can't hear you, Counselor.
Is this any better?
I still, I'm having a hard time hearing you as well.
Oh, we've got to put our big boys, voices on, so.
Yep. We're going to have to talk loud. All right. Very good. I also have a statement to read. It has come to my attention that members of the Town Council have been approaching employees of the town and engaging in communication that is more than just conducting conversations, as the Charter states in Chapter 2, Section 4-5. While the Charter does not preclude asking questions, seeking information, or conducting conversations, asking for detailed and specific information should be done solely through the Town Manager, as is required by Charter, Chapter 2, Section 4-5. Further, communication that leads to feelings of being uncomfortable by an employee, whatever the reason for the genesis of the uncomfortable feelings, should be saved for private conversation with the Town Manager, as he or she has jurisdiction over the employees, as again dictated by the Town Charter. Employees who consider themselves to be unhappy in their jobs are found to have reduced productivity, less motivation to perform well, and tend to leave for other workplaces. This place is a burden on the town, as well-qualified, highly-performing employees with vast amounts of institutional knowledge are truly a benefit to the town. Kindly consider the nature of your intended conversations before having them. And that's all I have. Item number six, Town Managers' Announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple things this evening. Some of them will also be addressed. We have presentations tonight for the Fire Station Building Committee, as well as McClure Engineering on the status of the dog kennel, things that we've been working on here at Town Hall. This past week, as many of you know, we had a ribbon cutting up at the airport using the funds for the FAA for the $7 million reconstruction of the airway. It was well-attended. There was a representative from Congressman Neal's office there. We're continuing to work with Congressman Neal's office. Counselor Marcati was also there. We were both chatting about trying to get additional funds for other projects in town, specifically the Fire Station Building Committee, and we'll be doing that going forward. Midweek, we opened the bids for the diner. We had a bona fide bidder, and I did talk to Mr. Clemmons, who is on the Southbridge Airport Commission, and seeing that that individual had met all the criteria, we will be, I spoke to Counselor Steves, who's the Chairman of GenGov. We couldn't have a meeting prior to tonight, but he was gracious enough to allow me to move it forward. The individual is motivated, has worked in the area in the restaurant industry, and is very excited to get, going forward with this endeavor, and we'll talk about it more this evening when it comes up on the agenda. Friday, our Economic Development Team, Ms. Dean, Mr. Rumsey, and I had the opportunity to meet with the former Lieutenant Governor and current President of the Worcester Chamber of Commerce, Tim Murray, as well as his, one of his employees, David Sullivan, and a local investor, to talk about opportunity zones and economic development here in Southbridge. We had some great conversation. There was some great ideas shared, and Ms. Dean and I will be attending some follow-ups with these individuals. Mr. Murray had some great ideas for some of the properties here in town. We're going to continue to work with him to improve some of the situation and see what we can get for investors in development to come in and look at some of our underutilized properties. I have been in contact, just so the Council is aware, with the new administrator over in Sturbridge, our IMA with Sturbridge for our sewer that we have with them. As many of you know, they do not have the capacity to go uphill and fiscal. That 25-year contract is up for renewal, and they've approached me about that, and we need to have some conversations. We should put it on an upcoming agenda for further discussion, so I can get you some details about what it is Sturbridge is looking to do. I just remind folks that we are posting on our website the vacancies for boards and committees. We're starting to get additional applications. I went through the list last week. I don't have to read it tonight. I don't have to read it every night, but we do have a fair amount of positions open. We're receiving applications, and I thank everybody who's put their applications so far for boards and committees. We also have some full and part-time positions that are up, and you can see those on our website, as well as the Massachusetts Municipal Association website, nma.org. And I just wanted to say that we will have a need for a brief executive session at the next council meeting, either before or after, just for legal and collective bargaining updates, and that's all I have this evening. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Item number seven, Presentations. The first presentation this evening is from the Fire Station Building Committee for an update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jack Jovan, Chairman of the Fire Station Building Committee, to the new Council's welcome board. This is going to be just a very brief update. I know how hot it is up here, but just, I know some councils have asked where we are in the project and where we're going, and some community members as well. As you're aware, the town last year, on a ballot, approved the funding of the fire station that, on the site that was selected, that was approved by council in the Worcester Street area. Pursuant to the passing of that dollar, a bond, or the debt exclusion, the committee solicited requests for proposals for an owner's project manager. We interviewed several firms, and we selected Palmeroy Associates. Palmeroy Associates located in southeastern Massachusetts, however, they have a strong history in the fire, in the building of fire stations and public safety buildings, and we're very happy to have them aboard. They've been our partners in working with the development of the plan going forward and refining the cost and the estimates going forward. As everyone is aware, no doubt, because it affects all of us in our pocketbooks, the recent inflation and cost of goods has really spiraled, and we are conscious of those dollar amounts and are working to make sure that whatever we build is going to be in the best interest of the town of Southbridge within the budget. So Palmeroy Associates is aboard. We had identified property on Worcester Street and Snow Street areas. I can't get into the negotiations that are ongoing. I just can say that we are in active negotiations with those property owners to try to secure the property to build a fire station adjacent to Henry Street Field. I think we can all agree, or many of us agree, that that area is well-suited for the fire station, and would be a benefit, given the area that's down there with Henry Street, Capillo Park, and the town would have control of that entire area. We also have Castle Bowes that we entered into that had done our feasibility study as part of our bid process. When we went for feasibility, we had the understanding that if we were happy with them, we could move to the Phase 2 construction design of the fire station building. Castle Bowes right now is, they have identified the team that will be working on our project. However, we have not gone to any designs to the next step until we secure the property. The property is the biggest stumbling block that we have right at the moment. However, I do want to publicly thank the Town Manager, this Town Manager, because he has been actively involved in that process. He's taken a lot of time and provided us a lot of input in working with the identification of those property owners and the negotiation process. We will update the Council when it is available as to the negotiations, because that will be a purchase through Council, so once we get to that point. However, that is ongoing, and continues to be ongoing. Counselor Marcati, at one of our Fire Station Building Committee meetings, I believe it was online, asked if we were still considering the two other properties that were not in the original design package, given the, while it might be in the best interest of the town to secure those properties to give us that entire area, right now it may not be feasibly, fiscally responsible for us to pursue that because of the cost escalations that we have seen. Also like to thank the Town Manager, and Counselor Marcati as well. I know Counselor Marcati, and I get into it sometimes in the past when I was on council, but Counselor Marcati has been one of the big advocates trying to pin down Congressman Neal, and I appreciate his efforts and the Town Manager's efforts when the Congressman has been here recently on the two occasions, one at Wells and one at the airport. And I think Congressman Neal actually articulated in his speech that the first message from the Town Manager was, hey, we need money for a fire station. So we would look to the Congress, and the Congressman had asked, what was the get, what was the give for the town of Southbridge? What were we going to be as part of that? And we are putting up a big portion of this, and as such, he believes that it's possible they may be able to assist us in some additional funding if we need to, because of the inflationary costs and the property acquisitions. If anything additional that the Congressman could give us, of course, we would take that off of the town's dollar amount. So to that, answer that question, Counselor Marcati, the original plan that we had put out to the voters of the parcels that we had included in that project are the only parcels that we are currently considering for the site plan and not the two additional parcels, so I can state that publicly. Those have been taken off because of fiscal constraints that we may be under. So everything in our mind is to the dollar amount to the taxpayers of Southbridge, because we're all suffering right now, and we'll hopefully, in the near future, we'll start to see some of those inflationary costs come down, and we'll be able to build the project. But that's where we are right now. I just wanted to give a brief update. I'll gladly, I know Counselor Marcati had asked if we could give regular updates, and we'll gladly give regular updates as we move along in this process.
Counselor Lazo, then Counselor Steves.
I'd just like to thank you for serving as Chairman, and I know how much work goes into it. You didn't have enough on your plate with council, now you're a little bit off your plate, and I'm sure you enjoy what you do for the town of Southbridge. Jack, my big question was, I understand the vote, and I understood the properties that we're looking at. The wild card was the environmentals. I mean, do we have any feedback yet on the environmentals?
So we did secure the services of tie-in bond on that, and they have evaluated the environmentals, and given the findings that they've had right now, it has allowed us to move into the next phase, because as you're aware, I'm very aware of the issues that occurred on a, other piece of property that the town had secured for a facility, and I know when we interviewed the Town Manager, and our big thing is we are not going to repeat the mistakes of the past, so we're confident in what we've found, that we can move to the next phase.
Thank you.
Counselor Steves.
Now, it's my question, thank you.
Very good. Anyone else? Counselor Montigny.
I just wanted to say thank you as well. It seems like you feel comfortable that everything is going as it should, maybe inflation's a little in the way, but sounds good to me, and thanks for the presentation.
Yep, thank you. And we hope to move a lot faster once we can secure these properties, because everybody's eager to go. We have the architect that's ready to design, but again, we're not going to waste town's money and design something until we actually have the site in hand.
Counselor Lazo.
Just, we have a big agenda tight. Here's a quick tidbit. Updates on a regular basis are the best I found when I was Chairman of the Building Committee for the middle high school. The more you update, the less rumors in Southbridge, and I love my town, but you have to feed it.
Yep. Well, you and I both served on that, so I certainly understand that.
Thank you.
And thank you, and hopefully the police chief, I was quick enough for the police chief, because he told me I had to be quick, so. He's bigger than me.
Counselor Rivas.
Oh, sorry. I just had a quick question. Aside from the updates here, where else would residents be able to find updated information?
We, there is a link from the Fire Station's website to our project, so there is some information up there. Our minutes have been uploaded. There's a couple minutes that are outstanding that we haven't approved, because we've been doing it remotely, but all the minutes were updated to the site, and I believe those should be all set, because it was an issue with, when they transferred, did the transfer on the website, but I believe everything's up to date. And they can contact Deputy Chief Hewlic. Deputy Chief Hewlic is pretty much my right-hand person, is really the key driver on this, and I thank him and everybody on my committee for the work that they do. He would be here, but he's on vacation, well-deserved vacation, so. All right?
Thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else? Very good, thank you. Our second presentation tonight is an update on construction of the animal kennel, animal kennel by McClure Engineering. Good evening, Chief.
Can I just do the segue to this? Are you okay with that, Mr. Chair?
Certainly, certainly.
Just so you know. So this project, as most of the council here knows, has been ongoing for many, many years. Back on October 3rd of 2018 was the first time we brought this to general government and discussed the location, which our engineer, professional engineer, will discuss tonight. We were told at that meeting on October 3rd of 18 that we just needed a letter from the schools, which we have. We got, I actually got that letter on October 4th, 2018, the next day, saying that they were in support, had no issues with that location. On October, I'm sorry, March 25th, 2019, the council approved the engineering for that location. On August 24th, 2021, it went back to DPW Subcommittee, and at that point I discussed the issues we were having with Bay Path due to some retirements and new leadership. Again, we discussed the location. This has gone to planning. It's all been approved, permitted. A professional engineer is here tonight to discuss things that I'm not knowledgeable enough to discuss, and we're already, give or take, about $30,000 into this location right now on Evergreen Street behind Chilton Street School. For the council, before I'm asked, the current balance, after some fees have been paid to McClure Engineering and some other vendors, is $256,689.88, the balance as it sits tonight. If a $25,000 donation gets approved later in this meeting, that'd bring our balance to $287,689.88. If an additional $200,000 allocation from ARPA gets approved tonight by this council, our total amount as of tonight, if all those items are approved, would be $481,689.88, which is more than enough to move forward with this project immediately, in my opinion. So without any further ado, here is our professional engineer.
Good evening. Peter Engel with McClure Engineering. At this point in time, all the design elements for this project are done. Bid documents are 99.9% completed, ready to go out to bid. Waiting on any last-minute comments from Town Manager, DPW, Town Council, and this thing can be on the street for competitive bidding for that construction, that shelter. In relation to the location, you know, we're utilizing an existing building, existing utilities, very minimal site work. The total estimated construction cost from the architect for the building portion, just over 500. For site work, it's under $100,000. To relocate the, or to start basically from scratch, switch locations, you're talking a minimum of $50,000 in engineering costs permitting. Utilizing that existing structure is saving about $100,000. New utility connections, probably another $50,000 to $100,000. There's no stormwater associated with the site, it's already there. So really, utilizing this location versus moving it, it's a cost savings of $200,000, $250,000.
What was that? Any questions? Counselor Lazo.
I firmly oppose the site, and I made it clear a while ago that this recreation area was built for children. The two bathrooms that are there are for Pop Warner and soccer and the playground that are there. There's a garage on the back that was supposed to be, you know, storage for the maintenance of the fields. I saw the blueprints, I saw the layout where it's going to go. It's going to go between the gazebo where the school has its outings and cookouts and stuff like that. It's more of a community area, and I still don't understand why it didn't go down on the side of the trek of land we have by the sewer plant, where we have water, sewer, flat land, no ledge, where, you know, we might run into some ledge up on that area, but I don't see $50,000 to relocate it. I don't see that. I'm going to build these businesses, and I install these things. I scratched out a number, I was going to donate the foundation to the kennel. When I looked at the site, I was like taken aback by it. We're destroying an area that was for kids, and bathrooms for the kids and in the fields, and school parking, we utilize that for family functions in the school. So usually on Parents Night or anything like that, we utilize that. And to see where this kennel is going, I don't know why, but it's in the wrong place. And I think that once it's done, people are going to go there, and then they're going to say, why does Southbridge always do something like this? Why don't they put it where, I'm not saying the airport, but I always thought it belonged where it was, down at the plant, where there's a trek of land that goes out, the sewer and water are right there. It's a cheap, flat site to work on. So I won't support the location, I support moving forward on the kennel, but if any counselor goes and looks at where this is going, and you still think it's a good idea, I, I'm shocked, because it's kids for us in my world, and recreation, we spent tons of money on that rec area to get it for kids, a playground, parking for the school. Matter of fact, that field was turned over to the school because of that, because it was an intricate part of the school recreation. It's the only field you have that attached Chilton Street School outside of the small rec area that's lower. So for me tonight, I really, really salute, you know, the chief and the efforts to push it forward. He's going to get it done. The only thing is, I'm really hung up on the location. It is a bad location as far as what we're losing and what we're gaining, and in the end, you're going to have this kennel in a neighborhood, not off from the neighborhood.
Counselor Adams.
Just wanted to, Peter, correct? And the chief, I just appreciate, appreciate your due diligence in the whole process of doing this. I know it's taken some time and a lot of energy, and this is something that's been going on for over three years at this point in time, four years. Actually, I believe it was even talked about before I was on the Town Council. I look forward to tonight to provide an update to the Town Council with $200,000 of ARPA and plus the $25,000 from United Land to finally complete this project. It's been way overdue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor Marcati.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Is there some reason why the dog kennel and Pop Warner can't coexist?
Good evening again. So, you know, not to delay this meeting any longer than it needs to be, but I grew up in this community, I went to Chilton Street School, I played in those fields, and to answer your question, no, there's already a building there, it's going to probably come off of that building, another maybe 50 feet, 60 feet, whatever the kennels will be, or 100 feet. There'll be some space in between that existing gazebo. It's going to get more use. I patrol that area every single day, I'm up there. The teachers, even when they're in school, full session, there's probably 10 spots left over. Our ACO needs one. She's going to have a Sally Port where she can literally drive into that building, so we really need one spot down there. I envision that as being a fabric of the community and involving kids and getting them down there and helping out our ACO and having kids, you know, and parents get to tour the building, use the bathrooms. I just think of it a lot differently, and you know, I disagree with Mr. Counselor Lazo, doesn't mean he's wrong, I just have a different opinion on it. I think we get a heck of a lot more use out of that location with that kennel there, actually, because even, and I'm a football guy, I coach my son, I played, just like Counselor Lazo, and that field is so far away, and if they need bathrooms, we'll make it open for the kids, because again, we're all about the kids, and I'm not trying to take anything away from anybody. So we'll work with the community, we'll work with the schools, we'll do what we need to do to make it work, but the very long version, to answer, no, I don't think it's going to be any issue at all with having a kennel down there. I don't think it's going to interfere with any kind of operations at the school or football or any capacity. The skate park's used minimally. I don't really see a lot of kids down there, other than the sports kids that are on those fields and the kids at recess. That's just my opinion of what I've seen.
All right. Thank you.
I didn't want to make the engineer answer that.
Counselor Lazo.
Chief, the kennel is going to be connected to that building.
Yes.
You lose the bathrooms for the, for the recreation area. That was my whole point, and that's why when I say it impacts, you know, you have a field, a soccer field right across the way, you have another field up top, and what I was saying was, that building was always a recreation bathroom area for the people that utilized the gazebo. The bathrooms were open. The bathrooms were open when the bathrooms opened. So when they attach the kennel to the existing building, and I understand what you're saying about the sewer and the water, that is a good selling point. But we have sewer and water down on a flat piece of land where the town owns on the side of the sewer plant. So for me, we're losing one area, and Southbridge usually does this, and I don't know why they do it. We do something on the whim, it gets done, and when it's done, we're sorry we did it. But I mean, going forward, I mean, I agree, I mean, we have to coexist, but losing those bathrooms, why did we put the building up in the first place? You know, losing the storage area for the recreation, why did we do that? And then we complain how we don't have storage, we don't have areas to work out of. And, you know, what we did in the past was build it to accommodate, not build it not to accommodate some of these things. Thank you.
Councillor Dow.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I agree with both of them, but I have something to say. Last year, we approved the chief to continue on that location because the big donation was at the DPW, the lady, she donated the money, we can't do it there, whatever the story is. Why we wait till now to discuss this going on right now after we approve to continue with the design and whatever the chief have to move forward with the kennel? Why we wasting time? Why years ago we're on tell them the location is not what we need, we need to move it since then? We waited the last minute and we come here and I think it's wasting the time. You already spent a lot of money, we approved them already last year, and I don't know what we're doing now. Thank you.
Councillor Lozlo.
Mr. Chairman, to the previous speaker, the reason why this was delayed was because we were on the Bay Path list for them to build it. And we had a donator that made it mandatory, put restrictions on the money. Now, that's, the restrictions are no longer, to my knowledge, are not enforceable, we can move it. And the actual kennel was going to be built by me donating the foundation because they didn't have the money. And Bay Path was going to do the framing. And then all of a sudden John LaFleche retired and the good graces of Southbridge and Bay Path, we ended up not getting Bay Path to do the job. So the delays have not been on the town of Southbridge. The delays have been with Bay Path and getting the thing done with the money. Now the money is coming in. Again, I wasn't on the council that chose that site. I got elected after, and I'm trying to correct, I think, a mistake, which we're going to be sorry once we do it. But if we do it, I'm only one vote up here, vote your conscience. To me, we did a lot of money for recreation. And to me, the dog kennel with all the waste and stuff that you have to work with over there, not exactly where I would want the recreation area to smell or look. Thank you.
Councillor Dow.
So now the issue is not the location, the money, like something?
The money is now there.
I know, but before you agree because you say it's supposed to be
The delay was from Bay Path.
So at the beginning, you agree on the location because it was a lot of
I never, I never agreed on
Gentlemen, gentlemen, one at a time.
Just thank you.
Councillor Lozlo.
I didn't agree on doing it. When I went there with the blueprints with the chief and looked at it, I said, no way, this doesn't belong here. I mean, if you walk over there, look at it. Common sense would say, doesn't belong there. And what I did was, Bay Path dropped off, the whole project came to a halt. So the discussion never came up again. And here it comes, we have some generous people in town that are donating the money, and this is going to be a one-shot deal. Do it right and put it in the right place. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you.
Councillor Avis.
Through the chair. Chief, any conversations or concerns from the principal at the school or residents or families?
No, I spoke with the receiver, Dr. Vall, he said there was some issues. And when I laid out the math for him, he's a smart guy. Schools in session 180 days a year, out of those 180, about 40 days are actually warm. We would have windows open, and for those 40 days, we would have a policy in place, dogs aren't outside. You're going to have a brand-new building, plenty of, the HVAC's going to be all brand-new. There's not going to be any issues with heating and cooling. So when schools in session, if there has to be windows open on the Cheltenham Street side, the few classrooms that are actually on that side, the dogs will not be outside in the kennel walking around, they'll be inside the kennel. We're going to put up some bushes, fencing, sound barriers, and our only other neighbor is the cemetery. So, and we own, I think it's 15 or 20 acres behind it, so nothing's going to be built behind it. And again, you know, we can talk on and on about, I have no problem, whatever the council votes, I'll follow through with, it'll get done. I'd like to see it done before I retire, that's six years for those counting. And it's been going on for 10 right now. So I just want to be done with this and get the town a nice new facility that we will certainly use. And we're running out of luck with Oxford because we're wearing out our welcome. Right now, we have more dogs in Oxford than Oxford has themselves and it's starting to frustrate them. So we just need to move forward and break ground, and wherever the project ends up, we'll get done.
Thank you.
Councillor Monticic.
Thank you. Yeah, I would agree that the location would be better suited for the sewer. I mean, people already complained that it smells in that area, and I would hate to see it smell in another area. And also, the other days that the dogs are outside, I get concerned because, you know, you think kennel, maybe there's big dogs loud barking, the kids get, you know, disturbed by that. But as it comes to the agenda item, I'll be voting yes because if you blink your eyes a few more times, all the ARPA money's going to be gone. So I want to see it get done, for sure, the kennel, one way or another. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Agenda item number eight is citizens forum. Are there any citizens that wish to come to the podium to address the council on an issue not on tonight's agenda?
Hello, my name is Lynn Di Pietro, and I live at 361 Dresson Hill Road. I'm here tonight to discuss in regards to 353. On August 19th last year, water from the road and culvert washed out my driveway. So my first question, does the town have a legal easement? Heather Blakely and the DPW director at the time, Matt DeJardin, and Eric Rumsey, these town officials came on site and they supplied all the materials, including a town employee, to do the labor and directed Splain Construction to do the work needed.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, I can't hear Ms. Di Pietro.
When the bills were submitted to the town, it was then rejected and they refused to pay. And this has gone on long enough, these people need to be paid.
Ms. Di Pietro?
This was all directed by the town officials of Southbridge.
Ms. Di Pietro, please approach the microphone. Please get right next to the microphone.
Can you hear me now? Do I need to stand there?
Just get as close as you can and we'll go from there.
Do I continue speaking?
Yes.
This was all directed by the town of South, the officials of the town of Southbridge. And I may make a note, I will note that I never authorized such work on my property, nor did I ever sign a contract with Splain Contractors or anyone else. This has all gone on too long. This was all directed by the town. And I'm wondering where it's at and where it's going to end up because there's an illegal pond dug on my neighbor's yard. Everything's just been left, and they did want to do an easement, and we've heard nothing from anybody. And that's why I'm here tonight to find out.
George Shinya, Theresa Rabb, Southbridge. I wasn't sure if I should have got up during the last agenda item, but I agree with Councillor Lozlo of the location of the dog kennel is a poor location. And I ask that council get together and maybe reevaluate the location. If you go up there on last week, there was probably 100 kids up there at night and maybe another 100 parents. And losing that facility for bathrooms and storage is, I don't think is a good idea. I think there's other locations in town, whether it be at the wastewater treatment plant, the DPW garage building, there's a lot of land up there. But all I ask is that council take and reevaluate the location. Accept the money, the process can still go on. But all I ask is that maybe go back to subcommittee for a revaluation. And if council decides that's where it should go, then it should go. The other thing, two things, I just want to, as a citizen, I want to commend the Airport Commission for the excellent job that has taken place at the airport. Being a former member of the Airport Commission, I've had the pleasure to work with some of the members that are up there now. And I'm just amazed at the progress that they've made under the leadership of Mr. Clements and the Airport Commission. It is definitely a crown jewel for this community, and it's going to continue moving forward. And I just, I would hope that council give their, you know, accolades to the Airport Commission for a job well done. The last thing that I have is that since coming to council meetings, it's been a continuing problem for the audience members to be able to hear any councillors. And this has been going on week after week after week with councillors saying, we're going to look at it. Or somebody saying, we're going to look at it, but we're still here tonight not being able to hear out in the crowd. Out in TV land, you can hear it, but out here in the audience, you can't. I think it's time that council, town manager, cable committee, look into a professional company to come in here and work on the sound system. So we're all able to be able to hear it, whether you're out on, listening to it on TV or here in the audience. We want, we want our citizens to partake in government, but it's frustrating when you're out there and you can't hear what they're talking about. So it would be great if US councillors and the town manager could look into this and finally get this rectified. I've been around here, come into council meetings for probably 30, 40 years, and it's been the same subject all the time, we're going to look at it. I'm not saying that the cable people aren't professional in the manner that they do things, but it's time to have a professional sound company come in and fix this system so we can all hear. Thank you.
Very good.
Good evening, can you hear me? Can everybody hear me in the audience? All right. Here's a direction. Take your mic, put it in front of your mouth, and speak into it. I was on nine years. Not once, I don't think, did anybody not be able to hear me, even when the mics weren't working. I just want to say, these were done not that long ago, the mics, a few years back. We had a professional company come in, well, I say we, the council actually. There was a professional company, it came in, they did sound, they did new mics, they did all kinds of things here. And if you take a mic and put it in front of your mouth, like many councillors do, I see them do that, and you speak into the mic, not like this, not like that, not like that, but into the mic, you're going to get it. This council chambers is notorious for having this, unless you're going to put a full ceiling in, which we've talked about in the past, right? Very, very non-financially suitable for this town. Just speak into your mic. It's not that hard, you know, I think you can do it, and the audience will hear you. And tonight, there is an input problem. I went back, as others have, there is some type of input problem as well going on. But clearly, I'm speaking and I think people are hearing me. So same with the audience, if you want to talk, just speak into the mic. Don't kiss it, don't touch it, you know, COVID, but just speak into it. So I'm asking again, bend it, bring it close, do whatever it is that works for you. Hold it with you when you turn your head, I know Councillor Steves tends to do that, I have to talk to him a lot about that. So I'm just saying, it's just from experience working with you, as my vice chair. So yes, you got to do your part. You got to use your big boy, big girl voices, do your part, speak into the mic, and everyone will hear you. I'm sorry it's not better, I'm sorry it's not state-of-the-heart, tens of thousands of dollars worth of equipment, but it's actually pretty good stuff. So that's all I got to report on that. I won't talk about the dog kennel right now, although I'd like to.
Mr. Chair, do you mind if I comment on that, the speakers?
Certainly.
Oh, okay, just really quick, thank you, I would like to comment. As being the station manager before, we did a lot of different things to try to remedy the sound problem here. We used to have speakers directly above here that would cause a lot of feedback. But all of the microphones have to stay on to a certain degree, and they have certain levels because certain councillors, as was previously mentioned, have bass ear, lower voices that maybe don't get caught as well as the rest of them. And then, and then when people turn this up to the sky, it definitely causes an issue with the feedback. But for councillors that are softer, you have to turn up the power on that specific microphone. Don't know where that came from. Okay. Is that them calling and they agree? Okay. But yeah, you have to turn up the power on one certain microphone, it's going to screw up everything. So it is a tricky job. I did it for five years. But I think it's better now than it has been in the past, but you do have to project when you speak. And the cable recording that you see on the computer and on TV sounds very good. And the video is only as good as its audio. And so as long as we all project, I think we'll be able to hear each other and the recordings will still be good on TV. But thanks for everybody's concern, I've been concerned with it for 10 years, thank you.
Any other citizens that would like to approach the podium?
Jack Jovan, 80 Highland Street, Southbridge. Just real brief, because I know you have a long agenda and it is hot up here. And I wasn't able to attend the last council meeting due to some personal family issues that I had to take care of. I just wanted to, didn't have my opportunity to thank all the voters of Southbridge for putting their faith in me for my two terms on town council. I certainly enjoyed them. I know coming on board and being elected chair right off the bat was quite a challenge during those times, and we moved through a lot of issues and COVID. And I just personally want to thank all the department heads that I worked with from the town because we have top-flight department heads. I think there are a lot of accomplishments that we as a council did over those four years. And the recent ribbing carton of two of those projects, Wells and the airport were projects that came aboard during my tenure. Wells started during the tenure of Councillor Clements, but it was truly a team approach. And I wouldn't have been able to do it without the support of all the councillors that I worked with over those four years. I do believe that, I do know that the appointment of our current town manager is one that I'll be proud of for the work that he has already done in the last two years. And I know that the town council and the town are good hands, but I just want to take this opportunity, I heard the kind words that all the councillors stated while I was out, so thank you for those kind words. But I couldn't have done it without the support of all of the councils that I worked with. So the individuals that I work with are the only ones that assisted me in being a good councillor and a good chairman of the council. So it's really the work of those that I had the pleasure of serving with that made all the accomplishments possible. And I look forward to the next couple of years as we work through other things. So thank you very much.
Councillor Lozlo.
Mr. Chairman, if I may comment, I don't normally like speaking on the citizen forum unless I relinquish my chair. But to the speaker at the podium, Jack Jovan, a friend, a politician, a chairman, school committee member, building committee member. I've served with him in so many capacities. The thing that was most impressive with Jack Jovan was when he became the chairman his first year with the previous manager. He technically, and I know what a town manager looks like, and I've served a lot of years. Jack Jovan took over the council and a manager that was more than difficult. And a lot of decisions that were made that he inherited, along with the other councillors that got elected at that time, we played cleanup till we got the new manager. Jack Jovan was the manager at times in that front office with those agendas and with the timing and even with the issues that came forward after, with the new manager coming on board. I mean, appointing a manager is a big feat. Never mind backing up the Wells project, the registry of motor vehicles that we lost, or we thought we lost. All these projects, kudos to the new manager. But Jack Jovan was always the able mariner, steering the ship through the water, and they were rocky waters. I sometimes thought, oh my God, I mean, we're going to get through this. Because they were good councillors, and they worked in good faith, and we did accomplish it. But Jack Jovan, you provided a lot of leadership, we had some great arguments, but the outcome was always good for the people of Southbridge. Thank you.
Very good, thank you, Jack, I appreciate it. Let's move on, please, to agenda item number nine. Vote to confirm the appointment of Dolores Larashell to Planning and Development Subcommittee for a one-year term effective immediately through July 31st, 2023. for a one-year term effective immediately through July 31, 2023. State ethics in good standing.
Second.
Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. DeeDee has been nothing but a great partner to the town of Southbridge and the Planning and Development Subcommittee since the first day she stepped forward to do this. She's also dedicated her time and volunteered her time for the community through the Redevelopment Authority and a few other things, so I greatly appreciate all of her time and effort and sacrifices away from her family for doing what she has done. I highly recommend her be voted in to be, I'm sorry, to be reappointed. Thank you.
Very good. Any discussion? Very well. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Item number 10. Vote to confirm the appointment of Kevin Splain to Department of Public Works Subcommittee for a one-year term effective immediately through July 31, 2023. State ethics in good standing.
Second.
Counsel Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. This was approved at the DPW Subcommittee Meeting by a vote of five to zero. Kevin Splain is a valuable member of the DPW Subcommittee. He knows a lot about road construction in town. He's out there, he sees what's going on with a lot of the road projects, so I absolutely endorse him for DPW. Thank you.
Very good. Any discussion? Very well. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Item number 11. Vote to confirm the appointment of Steve Lazo to Development of Public Works Subcommittee, I'm sorry, Department of Public Works Subcommittee for a one-year term effective immediately through July 31, 2023. State ethics in good standing.
Second.
Counsel Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Steve Lazo is also a valuable member of the Department of Public Works. He knows a lot about road construction in town. He's out there on the streets, he sees what's going on. He also served the town council for many years and was chairman of the town council. So again, I endorse Steve Lazo for DPW Subcommittee as well. Thank you.
Any discussion? Very well. All those in favor? Opposed? Just one. All right, I have eight, one. Very good. Eight, one, motion passes.
Who is the individual, Mr. Chair?
Counsel Ryan. Item number 12. Vote to confirm the appointment of Derek Julian to Protection of Persons and Property Subcommittee for one-year term effective immediately through July 31, 2023. State ethics in good standing.
Second.
Counsel Lazo.
The vote was unanimous for Derek Julian. He's been a former, he's been affiliated with the police department, citizen of the town, and a great, great worker at Subcommittee level. The vote was unanimous to approve Derek Julian.
Any discussion? Very good. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Item number 13, I'd like to withdraw as...
Mr. Chairman?
Counsel Lazo.
Can we read this agenda, and I will propose a motion at the end of this. We will make a motion in a second, and then I will have something to offer up.
Very good. Item number 13. Vote to confirm the appointment of Patricia Daji to Protection of Persons and Property Subcommittee for one-year term effective immediately through July 31, 2023, pending successful completion of state ethics.
So move. Second.
Counsel Lazo.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to refer back to Subcommittee for this appointment.
Second.
Very good. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Six to three. Item number 14. Vote to confirm the town manager's appointment of Jonathan Kamasi as Town Engineer Assistant for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30, 2025. State ethics in good standing.
So move. Second.
Counsel Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. The DPW Subcommittee voted against this recommendation by a vote of one in favor, three opposed, and one abstaining. The reason a majority voted it down was because we didn't feel the applicant possessed the qualifications essential to the job. The job description for this position, which was not included in the packet for newly-elected counselors, contains several essential functions and qualifications for consideration. In a nutshell, it basically requires a person to have a background in road construction and utility construction oversight, and requires at a minimum, an in-depth knowledge of current methods and techniques related to public works, construction, and surveying. Looking at the applicant's resume, I don't see it. The recommended applicant works at DPW as a laborer and a Class A driver. His duties include snow plowing, sanding, street sweeping, catch basin cleaning, equipment maintenance, line painting, and groundskeeping. Before that, he ran a catering service for 23 years. Now, there were other applicants with extensive knowledge of roadwork, construction, and...
Point of order.
What's your order?
This has nothing to do with the agenda item. He's discussing other people's resumes. Doesn't belong here. We discussed that in great detail at the Subcommittee Meeting, which in fact, out of the 41 minutes, only about 10 minutes was discussing actually this applicant.
I would like to be able to have some leeway on this, because the job description was very clear on what was needed for this position.
I asked for a point of order.
I think Counselor Adams is correct. We need to stick to the agenda item, which is to discuss Jonathan Kamasi.
What I'm appealing from your decision...
Mr. Chair, I asked for a point of order. So I'm asking for a ruling at this point in time. Thank you.
I'm ruling that you are correct, that we need to stick to the agenda item.
Then I'm appealing from your decision.
Very good.
I second the appeal.
All those in favor of the ruling of the chairman, please raise your hand.
Of the appeal.
Of the appeal.
The appeal? In favor of the appeal or the ruling of the chairman?
It's my understanding that when you make an appeal, it's for the ruling, and that's what's voted on immediately.
You vote on the appeal, not the agenda.
Excuse me. You know, you vote on the chairman's decision.
Right, but the thing is, it's called the appeal. The motion was, in other words, you ruled a point of order. He ruled in favor of you correctly.
Correct.
And there was an appeal by Marketti. The thing is, you're voting on the appeal. That's what's in front of us right now.
Right.
That's parliamentary procedure.
Okay.
You can vote, "I'm in favor of the chairman,"
How does that work?
Or "I'm in favor of the appeal." Appeal means you're going to override the chair and allow him to talk. If you don't want to override the chairman, then vote not in favor of the appeal.
Okay, so you vote no if you don't want to. Okay.
All those in favor of the appeal, raise your hand. I see three votes. All those not in favor of the appeal, raise your hand. I see six votes. The appeal fails.
All right, then I will continue. On Main Street alone, we spent over $225,000 on road construction oversight.
Point of order, Mr. Chair. This has nothing to do with the agenda item. The agenda items, go ahead, I'll let you, what's my...
I agree. We need to stick to Jonathan Kamasi and his being appointed by the town manager.
Okay. Thank you. What I am saying is that he is not qualified for the position. Thank you.
Very good. Counsel Ryan.
Mr. Chair, if it would be appropriate through you, I would like to request that Mr. Kamasi come address the board. I found it very disturbing during the meeting that he didn't once get asked while he was there for his thoughts or inputs to defend himself.
Talking to the microphone.
So I would request that Mr. Kamasi come up and speak to the council, which he should have happened at the DPW meeting. Thank you.
Mr. Manager.
Just a point of information. It's my understanding that Mr. Kamasi is out of town at this moment in time on a pre-scheduled trip, but it's also my understanding that he is available by telephone this evening and a microphone could be placed at the podium to address any questions.
It's highly unusual. Mr. Jovan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Excuse me, hold on a minute, hold on. The question on the floor right now was from Counsel Ryan to have him speak. The chair decided that speech at that point in time, so I ask that Mr. Kamasi be able to speak at this point in time. Thank you.
He has to turn off his background computer.
Could I just ask a question, Mr. Chairman? Procedurally, procedurally, I understand Mr. Kamasi is on the phone. However, I think, if I may be recognized, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly.
Thank you. Through you, procedurally, I get that you had a Subcommittee recommendation, and I'm not sure if I heard the recommendation or not, number one, because you couldn't really hear back there, and I know he was speaking into the mic. However, I think as former chairman of the council and as a former counselor, I would respectfully ask that you, through you, the town manager gives his recommendation and what the qualifications were and what the process was before you debate whether he's qualified or not.
I agree.
This, outside residents haven't heard what those qualifications were. Where did it come? How, okay, if that is the recommendation, typically, the process of verification and confirmation by council is an up-and-down vote as to whether this individual is qualified to serve the position. I haven't heard anything as a resident that states what it was, outside of one counselor's commented that he believes he's not qualified. I haven't heard anything from the body, the Human Resources Director, the town manager, or anybody else, what this individual and why he was selected as a candidate to fill this position. What was the process? I was on the council when we voted for that job description that was completed on an eight-to-one vote during the budget hearing. The only opposing recommendation was Counsel Marketti as to what the job description was. I would like to hear from the town manager as a resident why this individual is being put forth, irregardless of what the recommendation of the Subcommittee is, because that's a vetting process and a recommendation, whether they believe that it's favorable or unfavorable. However, this individual was brought forward as a candidate, and I think the public needs to know what his qualifications were and why the town manager felt confident in selecting this individual. The conversation tonight is always based on the qualification and the recommendation of one individual, and if you don't like that individual or their background or their qualifications, you vote up and down and not talk about any other candidates. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I entirely agree.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First off, just for a little levity, I've been here for two years. I've never once had to take my jacket off at a meeting, and this is probably the hottest meeting I've had. I'm usually pretty tolerant of heat, but tonight's a different story. To Citizen Jovan's question, it had been my understanding up until now that under Section 424 of the Charter, we had brought forward police and firefighters. As you know, I'm allowed to make appointments, and it...
Point of order, Mr. Chairman. He's not talking to this person's qualifications.
I am, Mr. Marketti, because...
I made a point of order.
No, you're not. You're talking to the process.
He just asked me for the process of how I selected him. Did he or did he not?
He didn't ask to recite the Charter. He asked what HR and you did to bring the name forward. We already know the history that it has to come to us. It's just that the last manager, and prior to that, nobody ever brought it to the council.
I'll let the town...
We understand that end of it. We don't need a charter revision here. We need a discussion on why Mr. Kamasi is the most qualified candidate.
Right, and I was getting to that, because under Section 424 of the Charter, I make my appointment based on the recommendation of my DPW director, and I currently have an interim DPW director who happens to be the town engineer, and the title of this position is the Town Engineer Assistant, and that individual will be working hand-in-hand with my town engineer. I don't know what...
Mr. Chairman, did you rule on my point of order? Just would like to know. Just clear it up, please.
Yes.
I know what you're ruling, please.
Citizen asked to respond, and he's responding. I'm not sure every, we're going to keep point of order, point of order?
Hold on, hold on. I want to hear the town manager. I want to hear the town manager in response to a concern from a citizen. We'll let the town manager answer the citizen's question.
At any rate, we published the job description. Applicants came, applications came in. There was a group of staff which consisted of Mr. DeJardin, who I think in any event would have been part of that panel as the town engineer or as the interim DPW director. Mr. Harding was involved, Ms. Rubena, who's the Assistant Town Manager, HR Director, and I attempted to attend all of the interviews on that particular day. I had a conflict. I attempted to log in to as many of them remotely, and then I was physically present for the others. I missed one of them. But I was there at the end for the discussion where the panel went over the qualifications of the various individuals. They also went over the fit and what the working environment was. A decision was made at that time, and Mr. DeJardin recommended Mr. Kamasi to me. During my two years, I have had experience with Mr. Kamasi. When we created this position, initially, we talked about oversight on the roads, paving, but we also talked about this position doing much more than that. I had come to know Mr. Kamasi and watched him interact in this building with staff, residents, seeing his desire to learn and improve himself, and I've also listened to this council say they want Southbridge residents. I also, part of my job, I oversee the 155 or so employees here, and I believe it's important for the employees to realize that there is a pathway for those who are exceptional and want to move up and have the desire to do more, and I want to improve morale. So one of my other considerations upon this recommendation was that in order to take good quality candidates that we have within the community on that recommendation, I took all those factors into consideration, and I concurred with the appointment. So my appointment this evening is based on the years of experience that Mr. Kamasi has within the department, and the two individuals probably work with him on a daily basis, talked about the strengths and weaknesses of the various candidates and how they saw them fitting it into the department, and so that was the recommendation made to me, and that's the one that I bring forth to you gentlemen and ladies as well this evening. Thank you.
Very good. Counsel Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Town Manager, did you provide this job position in our packet?
This evening, or when are you asking?
This evening.
The, I can't tell you whether it was in there or not, Mr. Marketti. I would have to look at the packet right now before me. My staff often mails that out for me prior to the beginning of the meeting, so if it's not there, I apologize, but I believe that job description has gone out to the council on more than one occasion. Through Subcommittee.
So we do have new counselors here tonight who are not in on all those meetings, and I'm not sure they ever saw this, so I don't see how they could compare Mr. Kamasi's resume with the minimum essential functions that are in this job description. As far as the allowing Mr. Kamasi to speak at my Subcommittee, I can't control, if somebody wants to speak, all they have to do is raise their hand, and I will call on them. I've told people over and over and over again, "If you want to be heard, please raise your hand." You brought Mr. Kamasi forward. I had no problem with him speaking, but I'm not a mind reader. I don't know, a lot of times, people don't even want to speak, so I had no idea that he wanted to speak if he wanted to. I certainly would have called on him, but the main thing that I'm looking at here is nobody's really had a chance to compare this to his resume, especially counselors who are just newly-elected counselors, so. I looked at this resume, and I looked at this job description, and he is totally underqualified for this position. Thank you.
Counsel Montagni.
Thank you. Yeah, we didn't receive that in our packet. I'm just going to state very quickly that I'm voting no on this, even though I do know the candidate, but to everything that the previous speaker just said, and the fact that I did watch the DPW Subcommittee meeting where it was spoke about, that there was a conversation prior, the manager and Counsel Lazo confirmed that there was a conversation saying that they were overly... saying that they were overly qualified people that were passed on, and that is why I will vote no, because it sounds like a HR problem, and I'm not well-versed in the description, as the previous speaker said, so that's why I'm voting no. Simple, not changing my mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Adams.
No, no, go ahead. Counsel Lazo had his hand up. He's a faster man than I am. Well, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. I'm not sure where HR comes into play at this whole thing. Again, we're going all over the place at this point in time, and it's kind of a little ridiculous to point out all the little isms that are out here. So I'm looking over at the Subcommittee meeting that was set up for those days as well. Was it not in that packet? If it was not in that packet, and if the DPW Subcommittee Chair was so concerned about it, it is also his responsibility to let him know. I do it all the time with Ms. Nor and all the other ones. If there's something missing, I contact them. But we're way off the topic again, and a little ridiculous, but thank you.
Counsel Lazo, then Counsel Ryan.
I didn't call a point of order on you, for the record.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
Look, there's two things you can talk about under Mr. Kamasi's appointment. The process and Kamasi. And to my knowledge, and I know Mr. Kamasi, he's a fine gentleman. I call him a friend. The process was flawed, okay? We have, Mr. Kamasi's career is mostly maintenance by the job description. So I'm under the impression that Mr. Kamasi, if he gets his job, will be trained to fit the position. What that does is it creates bad morale down in the ranks for one reason. If everybody knew that they were, because a lot of people don't think they're qualified that are in the DPW, they would have applied if they knew that it wasn't going to be a test or they were going to be, in other words, trained into the position, they would have applied within. Mr. Kamasi, the process is selling his house and moving out of town. So much for the local preference. Now, moving forward with this, whether Mr. Kamasi gets this job or not, DPW is still going to run. My problem is with the process. And, you know, everybody wants the most qualified person. When you're told as a Counselor that there are overly qualified, overqualified candidates, and when an HR person calls a candidate and says you're overly qualified, cannot get the job, this is a major breakdown in the appointing process, and that's where my problem lies. Because if we have overly, if it was not brought to my attention that we had overly qualified candidates that didn't get the job, I probably wouldn't have a word to say today. I would probably turn around and say, I'm voting for the guy, let's train him up, nobody applied, whatever. But at this point here, we've bent over backwards to put somebody that is not qualified for that position. The position now, when we were having, we were in a quagmire, and I know one Counselor told me, trust your department heads. We do trust our department heads. But when you turn around and see something like this, which is a miscarriage of process, I turn around and say, we cannot condone this behavior by the Manager, by HR, or by the Department Head, because we would rather have, if there is a overqualified candidate in the way, that's the person you want to get into your DPW. So the person could climb up the ladder because of his talents. This is what we do in the private sector. Moving forward, tonight you're going to vote. If the Council confirms it, we've condoned this action, we will continue to have the issues we have. The position originally was to look at trenches, so we didn't have problems with all the settling on Dresser Street, and that's what spurred this. We need eyes and ears on the ground. I don't think he knows the difference between a soup of fire-
Excuse me. No, 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 come on.
No, no, that's not acceptable. That's not acceptable.
Read your-
A point of order, Mr. Chair.
Counsel Lazo, it's not acceptable.
Keep to the agenda, thank you.
Fine, I'll come back around.
I got my point of order out there.
I'll come back around.
My apologies for-
No, 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 it's okay. No, it was a point of order in order. I'm not arguing that point.
Thank you.
My point is, is that when you-
Mr. Chair, again, point of order. You need to rule on it.
I did.
You need to rule over it, you do.
Mr. Chair.
And I yield to that. I'll stop on that.
Thank you.
The process and procedure, parliamentary procedures, to keep order, not make disorder. And I understand it.
Thank you, Counsel Lazo.
Go ahead, I'm going to let other Counselors talk.
Counsel Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, I would still like to have Mr. Kamasi. I made that request earlier, I would still like to have him address the Council. Thank you.
I understand that you'd like him to speak. It doesn't sound like it's really possible.
Why is that? He can put it right to the microphone. Nobody else can hear him.
I respect the will of the Chair.
Put him right under the microphone. How is that an open meeting law violation? I don't know.
What's the basis? What's the basis of it being an open meeting law violation? I agree. I agree. Counsel Adams.
Point of clarification. We did vote that we were allowed to have hybrid meetings, and it was up to the Chair to be able to do such a thing. At that point in time, also, the open meeting law allows somebody to come in as a presenter or whatever it may be, not with the Town Council, but is allowed to go up there and be online and speak on it. That is part of the open meeting law. That's all I have.
Thank you. Counsel Steves.
To what Counsel Adams just said, it was not posted as a hybrid meeting, however. It was posted in person. I said it was not posted as a hybrid meeting, it was posted in person.
That's correct.
So I think Denise is correct. Since I have the floor, I'd like to ask, can you hear me now? I know I have a tendency to move around because I'm looking at my notes and stuff. So I'd like to ask the Manager or the DPW Director, a couple of quick questions. First of all, the Manager mentioned that he considers Mr. Kamasi the exceptional candidate. How so? In what way, what stood out for you as his exceptional qualities for this particular job?
I think I iterated him before. I mean, my decision process, as I said, was I take the recommendation. I have had the chance to meet all these individuals, except for one, that I didn't get to go to the in-person. I've run into them in town, they're all great people. I do have, I have had interaction with Mr. Kamasi here. I've watched him interact with my staff when he's working with people in town. And I know that he's made an extreme effort to learn an awful lot outside the scope of his job, to be a better employee. And that just struck me as something that I want to recognize and reward. So when my interim DPW Director made the recommendation, having had that interaction, I think, like many of our employees, he's outstanding, and I'll support it.
And I have no problem with that, and I understand that that kind of a person definitely should be encouraged. I would like to ask, based on what the job description says, how does he, how does his exceptional qualifications fit into the job description?
And to that end, I think I would defer to Mr. DeJardin, who is the Town Engineer and will be working with these candidates on a day-to-day basis.
Sure. I'll start by saying that John Kamasi is extremely ambitious, and he has applied for positions within the Town that he was unqualified for. This is not one of them. He is qualified for this position between his experience running his own business, between his experience at Helgerson, between his five, among his five years' experience with the department as a maintenance man and equipment operator, not as a laborer. He has learned the skills that he needs to, and might I add, the classes that he's taken for blueprint reading and other skills that are associated with his current job and the job that he's applying for at the moment, or that we're considering him for at the moment. He has the qualifications that are necessary. And I think we're focusing on one small aspect of this, the qualifications, which is the construction experience. He may not have had the most experience out of all of the candidates on that point, but overall, he was the best candidate, and that's why we chose him. He is an exemplary employee. He's extremely motivated. He will learn anything that we point him toward. He has taken it upon himself to better himself at every opportunity possible. And with his five years' experience with the department, he's, he has become familiar with our specifications and our standards, which is exactly what we've been talking about and that these people need to know. So overall, he is absolutely a qualified candidate for this project, this position, and that's why I recommended him.
Okay, to follow up with that, so do you, has, how, has he, has he passed any of the testing that is necessary for the various classes that he has taken that you know of? And/or do you foresee, how much, how much training do you foresee him needing to actually? Because we had a lot of extensive discussion on the job description, what we wanted this person to do over the course of several months, and back and forth, and a lot of rearranging with the way the job description ended up being written. Do you, do you foresee, what kinds of training do you foresee him needing to do to actually meet the kinds of qualifications that we were all kind of envisioning to have him be able to be there and take the, to really truly be our eyes and ears on the, in the field on a full-time basis, knowing the fact that he's not going to be on one project, he's not going to be on one project for 40 hours a week, he's going to be bouncing between projects and all that stuff? If you could kind of talk us through that.
As with any candidate, I won't know fully their capabilities and their knowledge until they're working under me and I'm able to fully get a grasp of their abilities and their knowledge. As far as specific training courses, I've envisioned something like NICE certification, which is, which is certification that somebody gets to inspect asphalt projects and do density testing and stuff like that. But there are a number of things that it's going to depend on the specific jobs that he's being put on and the specific knowledge that he has and needs. I'll leave it at that.
Which honestly really doesn't answer the question.
Okay, can you repeat the part of the question that I didn't answer?
We, because you saw, you saw obviously the job description that we have. And obviously you interviewed with it. And you heard the kinds of conversations that we had at DPW and up here in various, and at GenGov, over this job and what we wanted to see in terms of somebody as this overseer. And as you might recall, we had thrown around the idea of this person being an engineer, then pulling it out and backing it off, and saying, well, it would be, it would be nice, but not necessary, and that kind of stuff. So I think if we're trying to figure out somebody who is the person we really want to be seeing doing this job, and you kind of suggested there would be entire, almost, if I heard you properly, it would be like a situation where the person would be getting training based on which individual job they're looking at, which-
Not necessarily. A lot of our jobs have similar aspects to them, and some training would apply to most of them.
So are there specific-
We can talk about specific jobs. If they, if he goes out to inspect National Grid trenches, I can put on a sheet of one paper the things that he's, that he needs to look out for. We're, we're getting bogged down in the construction inspection side of things anyway. There was a job description that was approved, and it has much more, much more than just construction inspection.
That is true.
And just because the Council wants to see a construction inspector hired for this position, doesn't mean that that's what the job description is and how I see the job unfolding. We need better oversight over our construction projects. This person, no matter who they are, will not be able to do 100% oversight on all of our projects all the time and have all of the knowledge necessary to do that.
Absolutely.
None of the applicants can.
Do you think-
I picked him because he is willing to learn. He has, he has knowledge, a knowledge base that can be built upon in order to succeed in this, in this job. He has plenty of stormwater experience with his five years here, which is a big part of what's, of what we, where we need to be, to be focusing-
I agree with that.
With, I mean, I'm getting emails from the EPA about things that I should have done two years, that our Town should have done two years ago. And I'm telling them that maybe we'll get it done in two years from now.
Okay. Like, for example, in the job description, it says, "The person shall operate AutoCAD software to design, plot, plan, and professional engineering projects." Can he do that?
He does not have AutoCAD or GIS experience.
Thank you.
All set?
For the moment.
Okay, very good. Counsel Arivels.
Through you, thank you, Mr. Chair. And so, in preparation, I did pull up the job description. I also heard from someone that works in the department, and I also watched the meeting of the DPW and heard the Town Managers and your comments in relation to why you were recommending this individual. My question is, there's been sort of a lot of back and forth about the construction experience. What percentage of the position would constitute construction oversight as opposed to the other elements of the, of the job?
I envision it maybe being a third to a half of the position.
Okay, that's important.
Can you give us sort of, through the Chair, an overview of what your vision is for this position and, you know, kind of giving us a little filling in, a little bit more about why you felt Mr. Kamasi, you know, fit that, that description?
Sure. Like I said, I see this person assisting with construction inspection, but they're not a construction inspector, they're the Town Engineer Assistant. Other things that the Town Engineer is responsible for that they could assist on are stormwater or MS4 permit requirements. I'm a month away from having to submit our next annual report for stormwater. I'm not sure when I'm going to have time to, to address that. I'm going to have to, but it's going to be pushing other things back. So this person could assist with data collection for the stormwater permit. They could help me administer, not just inspect, but administer several of the multimillion-dollar projects that we have ongoing at the current moment, whether that be reviewing pay requisitions or checking certified payrolls, all things that I have to do that are things that I could offload on an assistant. Mr. Kamasi, as I've said many times, he is, he's a go-getter. He, he has a good knowledge of the workings of the DPW. He is a good fit with our culture. He is a good fit for this position, and, and I chose him because he, not only does he have the background that can be built upon in order to succeed in this position, but he's somebody that I can work with closely. I, there may have been other candidates that I could also have worked with closely, but this candidate, I know for a fact I can work with him and do great things with him.
Thank you.
Counsel Lazo.
Madam, glad you got up. You even backed me up even further. When you turn around and say that the Counselors are getting bogged down in construction, let's explain what the problem was that we created this initially, was construction. And that's why a lot of people from construction applied for the job. Now, you're willing to learn, he's willing to learn, and you're willing to train him. That sounds like a candidate when you don't have any overly qualified candidates. You take that candidate and you train him, but you're going to be paying top dollar for somebody that doesn't have the qualifications, and you're going to train him up. I get it. I know what you, I know why you're doing what you're doing. But what I'm, what I'm saying is, I'm listening to Gus Steves. I'm Joe Dow at the Subcommittee. You're taking a guy that has a resume of maintenance- You're taking a guy that has a resume of maintenance, and you're trying to make it something else, which I understand, but as Joe Dow said, and he kind of put a stone in my shoe, you're going to take a guy that does a great job in this area, and we're going to put him over here, but he's not ready for this area. And just in that process, the discussion at subcommittee, and that's why I'm going more at the process I think we need to really get our head in the game here, because we have brand-new streets that are sagging, okay? That was the problem everybody on the council was enlightened by, was all the brand-new Main Street falling apart. We have water drainage all over town, we need issues. I just didn't know that this was going to be your guy, your gopher, so to speak. I'm looking for more than that. I'm looking for more than that, and this is not the man. Thank you.
You're looking for less than that. You're looking for a construction inspector, and that's not the job description that we are looking at right now.
You had a breakdown at general government with that job description because it came out of DPW. I understood it differently, and that the reason why it started was because of all the problems we had on the construction side. And to the teaching of the candidate, your rank-and-file DPW guys now, if they knew you were going to train him, they would have applied for the job, because they thought they weren't qualified. They were just great maintenance guys, and some of them have other talents, but they didn't think that it was going to be the on-the-job training job. Thank you.
Very good. Counselor Montigny.
Thank you. Is this the position that you guys asked to be created, this council, last year because of the Main Street lacked oversight in general? I mean, I'm not trying to... But so, it just... I look at it, and I go, "If this person was watching Main Street, we wouldn't have had a problem with Main Street." And then, we talked, you know, when the DPW director had given his concerns about why it's a good idea to hire him, he's talking about, "I can give him a piece of paper with something, 'Go do this, it's for National Grid, and we can help me with data collection.'" I just... I'm just confused. I thought this was supposed to make sure that our roads get fixed properly in the future, so we don't have to, you know, vix Main Street, you know? I just wanted to be clear that that was the position... This position was supposed to oversee roads. I'm not sure if a construction inspector or a town engineering assistant, but it sounds more like... It sounds more kind of like a DPW manager's assistant, almost, the way it's being described at the podium. So, again, I'm still hearing about five different things, and it all makes me want to vote no, but thank you for the clarification. Appreciate it.
Very good. I'd like to see if a couple of citizens could come up at this point. Mr. Lazo.
My name's Steve Lazo, 70 Genesee Street, Southbridge, Mass. I sit on the DPW subcommittee. I'm a past councillor, past chairman, I chaired basically every subcommittee. I've been in the construction business since I was 20 years old, and I'm not going to tell you how old I am now, okay? I know Mr. Camassi is a very nice guy, everybody's been saying, patting him on the back. He is a nice guy. But I sat at the meeting, and what I got from the town manager on this man is he sold hot dogs for a business, which is fine. He got a Class A license.
I would like to say, "Point of information, Mr. Chairman, I never said that, so don't put words in my mouth, please."
It's in his resume, Mr. Chairman.
But you said the town manager... That's what you heard from the town manager. You didn't hear that from...
Okay. I retract that. It's in his resume, all right? And you sent that out to us. I stand corrected. Thank you. So, I'm looking at his resume, and he has a hydraulic license and a Class A license, which everybody in their brother has one of those. And to give him this position, he doesn't have any drain layers permit... I mean, license or any knowledge on that. He'll be watching the pipes being laid, he's supposed to make sure the compaction's there. Does he know about flowable fill and gas lines that you can't use flowable fill? I don't know what this guy has. From what we got, and the reason why I didn't vote for him, is the qualifications. From what I'm understanding, we didn't get any other people in their qualifications because his town manager basically picked him, which is his prerogative, I guess, to do whatever he wants to do. But I could not vote for the man because of his qualifications. Now, if there's somebody else out there that's more qualified, that's taking the same money, we're going to get more bang for the buck. And I've appointed many people as chairman on this town, in the town here, and some of them I regret. And if you people vote this guy in, unqualified, you're going to regret it, because he doesn't have the qualifications to do this job. Don't get me wrong, he's a nice guy. He's a great worker for the town of Southbridge, but he isn't qualified, and that's all I want to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening again. Denise Clements, 128 Country Club Place. Thank you for your time this evening. I'm here because I'm part of the general government subcommittee. And back in March, we were presented with, by the then-DPW director, Blakely, a new job that they were looking to enact. There was a job description with the essential functions. It was supposed to be called Assistant Engineer, and at the time, the same essential functions, with the exception of occasional overtime snow plowing, was listed. That was back March 24th. We had a long discussion about this, and why did we need this at this time? And it was because of the butchered-up job on Main Street, that it became completely apparent that we just did not have proper in-house oversight. And there were a lot of road projects going on. Ms. Blakely was underwater on that, as Mr. DeJardin had lots going on as well in all these projects that were happening. There were projects at the airport, there were projects on every street, pretty much. There was a lot of paving that you people voted on, which is great, however, all at once, maybe not so great, because we lack road experience in this community in terms of... In our department heads. I'll just say that. That is not something that is a misnomer, that is the truth. We did lack it, we still lack it, we still need to hire people that have more road experience. So, moving forward, there were questions asked about the ability or why did we need an engineer? I raised questions about experience, saying three years, you don't even... You can't even shovel dirt correctly at three years, maybe five years, you've got more experience. But truthfully, a position like this, with the requirements that Mr. Marquetti mentioned and Mr. Steves mentioned, it just seemed like we were looking for an awful lot. And I asked how much, and it was around $70,000, and I thought, "You're going to find an engineer for $70,000 who can do all that?" I was really shocked. But go for it, you know? So, in the meantime, they decided to change the title. They came back to subcommittee, to GenGov, which I was not able to be there.
Point of order, Mr. Chair. Just to clarify.
I'm going over qualifications as to why this community shouldn't fund this position.
I said point of order, so it's my turn to speak. Thank you. So, what I would say right now is, I completely understand the point everybody's trying to make as far as the qualifications. We've done that five times at five different meetings. The point is, Mr. Camassi is up here today to be confirmed by the town council or not confirmed, and that's it. Based on his qualifications, and us, we agree with it or not. That's my point of order. I think we need to do our best to stick with it, not slam people for who they are, what they've done. That's all I'm asking.
Mr. Chair, the charter says the citizen has the right to be heard, and I'm not so sure the point of order is correct.
You do have the right.
I have the right to be heard.
I don't think you can call point of order on a citizen. I don't believe you can call point of order.
It is my right at an agenda item to be heard.
Please continue.
Thank you. So, again, having been a member of this committee who was voting on this type of thing, this is why I'm bringing this up. As we said, management site construction and field residence engineering, maintenance of daily site workload, covering construction, responsibility for permitting processes, street entry, water, sewer connections, repairs, calculating of related fees, field inspection, maintaining online permitting, assisting in maintaining compliance with the town's EPA, Environmental Protection Agency, the NPDSE... Wait, let me make sure I've got this all right here, which is the National Pollution Discharge Elimination Program, and the MS-4 general permit, which is a five-year permit that's issued by the US EPA and the Mass DEP. Managing subdivision construction activities, conduct inspections of utilities, although, let's face it, sewer and water conduct their own permitting inspections, it would be more for the gas side of it.
Ms. Clements, your three minutes are up.
Well, you interrupted me.
Make a motion to extend the three minutes.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Please continue.
Thank you. So, let me just say, project engineer, which is one of the components, three to four years in an engineering role, usually having a bachelor's in mechanical, aerospace, or electrical engineering, and if not an engineer, then no less than four years, often eight to 12 years to get a license. AutoCAD software was mentioned tonight. If you look that up, how long does that take? Three months to begin to understand it, and another six months to be proficient. Then there's the ARC GIS, the people forms, which to create forms and databases, and the maps online containing the town's assessing information. Where are the qualifications for this person to have this job? We're going to train him? We're going to need a trainer to train him? Or is he going to take up more of Mr. DeJardin? The only thing we have here as a DPW assistant director now, running DPW for us, is he going to take up all of his time and not really know what he's looking at in a hole? We need to know the difference between sand and cement in a hole, and I'm sorry, five years of maintenance at the town department does not give him the qualifications that we were instructed this job would provide. And Mr. Town Manager, you mentioned that he was in food service. That's what you mentioned at the meeting. And I was really appalled to watch, as I watched that meeting, because I didn't attend, so I did watch it myself, and here the analogies of, "He gets along well with others, and he shows up for work, and he knows how to plow snow." Where was the meat of this job that we're paying $70,000 or thereabouts for? There's an... I don't know the person, but I do know that this should go back and be resubmitted, and we should get more qualified workers for this community. We should not just settle for something because that's all we got the first round. When you have first-round people to come in, and they don't qualify, you go out and you get more. You just take the time. This town deserves the time. This is a new position. We deserve to have proper people in these positions. We cannot afford to do the on-the-job training, and we cannot afford to have somebody who just doesn't know and doesn't have the confidence and experience that is needed. To go to a work site like Lynch and to look at them in the hole and say, "You're doing this wrong, that is not the right geomaterial that should be here." We didn't have that. We pay hundreds of thousand dollars for oversight on our projects. We cannot afford... This community deserves better, and I'm asking you councillors to do the right thing. If this guy wants to reapply, great, but give it some time and find some more qualified people for Southbridge. Why can't Southbridge get the good people once in a while? Why can't this council do it? Stand up for the community, and let's resubmit this job application and start over again. I'm sorry if it's going to take a little time off of Mr. DeJardin.
Ms. Clements, your time has expired.
Thank you. I now get passionate. I feel in my heart.
Can we move forward with the question?
Second motion. I didn't recognize anyone yet. The next councillor that's to be recognized is Counselor Marquetti.
Joe Dow moved the question.
He didn't recognize him.
He was not recognized.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair.
When you move the question, you don't have to be recognized.
Yes, you do.
Parliamentary procedure says when someone moves the question, ends all discussion. I seconded it, now you vote on it. To move the question or not to move the question?
You need to be recognized.
No, you don't. Take a point of order. You don't have to be recognized.
I believe you do.
All right. Well, Mr. Chairman, I... It's not my intention to trash anyone. Mr... If you want to promote Mr. Camassi to some other position, I don't have a problem with that, but all I want to say is, I just want us to get someone in there who could start road construction oversight from day one. Ms. Clements said it perfectly when she read the job description. Almost every line was dealing with road construction. There was only one line that dealt with stormwater, so I think it's more than just a stormwater, but that's all. That's all I have to say. I'm not trying to bash the guy. I just want somebody who is really overqualified to do the job, and that's all. Thank you.
Very good. Counselor Adams.
Move the question.
Second.
Very good. We have a motion to move the question. Although... And seconded. Very good. There's no debate on this. All those in favor?
Moving the question.
Hands up if you're moving. Keep your hands up. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Those against? One. The motion carries. The question is now being moved. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Vote to confirm the town manager's appointment of Jonathan Camassi as Town Engineer Assistant for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30, 2025. State ethics in good standing. Roll call.
Question, Mr. Chair.
Sir.
Before I do the roll call, can I amend the motion at this point in time? Without further discussion? Well, we'd have to vote on the amendment.
No, we have...
Is it because of move the question?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Let's see. Counselor Daniel.
Yes.
Counselor Dow.
Yes.
Counselor Lazo.
No.
Counselor Marquetti.
No.
Counselor Montigny.
No.
Counselor Rivas.
Yes.
Counselor Ryan.
No.
Counselor Steves.
No.
Counselor Adams. Yes.
Motion fails to carry by four to five. Motion fails. Five-minute recess.
Thank you.
Thank you.